Is present, so I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Pasadena area community college district board of trustees meeting. This is our regular business meeting number nine and today is Wednesday, October 21st, 2020. And our first item of business will be a roll call. And we'll have Mr. Alex Buckelheid conduct that roll call. And also Alex, do you have any COVID-19 announcement that you need to make as far as how we're conducting the meeting and roll calls, et cetera?
At this point, we will not make the COVID announcement. We'll do that once we recommission open session at seven o'clock. But I will go proceed with the roll call right now. Student trustee Ramirez? Not here yet. Trustee Chen Lau?
Here.
Trustee Osterling?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Silver?
Here.
Trustee Wa?
Here.
Trustee Martin?
Here.
Trustee Fellow?
Here.
There we go, sir. Seven out of seven.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Buckelheid. And agenda item number two is public comment on closed session agenda items. Do we have any public comment on the closed session agenda items?
I have no comment on closed session items.
Okay. Seeing none, we are now going to recess to closed session. And in that closed session, we will discuss the following items. D1, Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Appointments, Chief Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer. Item number two, Government Code Section 54956 dot eight, Conference with Real Property Negotiator. Address 4105 Rosemead Boulevard, Rosemead, California. And the district negotiator for this item is Dr. Michael Bush. And the negotiating party is the El Monte Union High School District. Item three, Government Code Section 54957 dot six, Conference with Labor Negotiators. Agency Designated Representative, Robert S. Blazinski, Assistant Superintendent, VP of Human Resources. Item number four, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation. This is Government Code Section 54956 dot nine. Item five, Conference with Legal Counsel, Pending Litigation. D2, Significant Exposure to Litigation, One Potential Case. Government Code Section 54956 dot nine A, One Case. Item five, Conference with Legal Counsel, Pending Litigation. And lastly, Government Code Section 54957, Evaluation of Employee Superintendent. Government Code Section 54956 dot nine A, One Case. And lastly, Government Code Section 54957, Evaluation of Employee Superintendent. Superintendent President, pardon me. Superintendent President, pardon me. And with that, we will recess to the closed session. And with that, we will recess to the closed session. And we will reconvene the regular meeting, the open session, at the usual time of seven o'clock PM. And we will reconvene the regular meeting, the open session, at the usual time of seven o'clock PM.
I'm looking for John Martin. Hey, Alex.
Yeah?
Before the end of this meeting, we haven't reconvened yet, but before the end of this meeting, can you have somebody let me know who's going to report out for each of our different shared governance groups?
I sure can.
Great, thank you. Do we have everybody here? I don't see John Martin.
I do not see John Martin either, so we might wait.
Okay, yeah, we'll hang on and wait.
Where's Sandra?
I don't see Sandra either. One, two, three, four, five. Yeah. So we'll wait a couple of minutes. I see David. Good evening, David, welcome.
Good evening.
Okay, we'll hold out.
We do have a caller on the line, 213 area code ending in 226. I'm going to try to unmute that person. Oh, there they went.
Okay. We'll wait until we get our last two trustees and then I'll reconvene and we'll get rolling.
Yeah, trustee Martin has arrived, but we're waiting for trustee Chen Lau.
There's trustee Martin. Hi, John. Okay.
There's trustee Chen Lau arriving.
There she is. Okay. All right, we are going to reconvene the open session of the Board of Trustees Pasadena Area Community College District. It's Wednesday, October 21st, 2020, and this is our regular business meeting number nine. And we will start by reporting on action taken during closed session. There was no action taken by the board in closed session. Item number two will now go to roll call, and for that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Bucklehide, and you may also have an announcement about how we're going to conduct the meeting this evening.
Yes, I do. Prior to roll call, I would like to make clear, so for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that this Board of Trustees meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, as amended by Governor Gavin Newsom and Executive Order N. 2520 dated March 12th, 2020, in that all trustees are at their residences and all are participating by remote video or teleconference. I will now conduct the roll call. Student trustee Ramirez.
Here.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Sandra, yourself, and report in, please.
Here.
Trustee Osterling.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Silver.
Here.
Trustee Wa.
Here.
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Fellow.
Here.
Colonel trustee, you're present, I would now like to request that each trustee in turn respond to the following questions. I will start with trustee Chen Lau. Trustee Chen Lau, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings up until now?
Yes.
You have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to request that trustee Osterling respond to the same questions. Trustee Osterling, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings up until now?
Yes.
You have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Next, I would like to request that trustee Brown respond to the same questions. Trustee Brown, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings up until now?
Yes.
You have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to request that trustee Silver respond to the same questions. Trustee Silver, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings up until now?
Yes.
You have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to request that trustee Wa respond to the same questions. Trustee Wa, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings up until now?
Yes.
You have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to request that trustee Martin respond to the same questions. Trustee Martin, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings up until now?
Yes.
You have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to request that trustee Fellow respond to the same questions. Trustee Fellow, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Finally, I'd like to request that student trustee Ramirez respond to the same questions. Student trustee Ramirez, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Were you able to hear our proceedings up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
I would now like to ask that any member of the Board of Trustees speak up at this time if they have not been able to clearly hear any trustee. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that all trustees present have indicated that they were able to hear all of the trustees clearly. I would next request that any trustee speak up at this time if such trustee has any reason to believe, based on voice recognition or otherwise, that any person representing themselves to be a certain trustee is not truly so. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that no trustee has expressed doubt that any trustees are the parties participating in the teleconference. I would now like to advise the trustees and the public that any votes taken during the remote conference portion of this meeting must be taken by roll call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bucklehide. Okay, next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm looking out at our meeting participants today, trying to find somebody that I haven't called upon, and I see Hedba. Hedba, would you do us the honors of the pledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry to catch you by surprise there.
That's okay. Okay, ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Hedba. Next up is Agenda Item Four, which is Approval Reordering of Agenda Items. Do we have any requests for approval or reordering of agenda items? Let me say it differently. Do we have any requests to reorder the agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask, I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Trustee Silver and moved, and trustee Fellow seconded. Thank you. Okay. Agenda Item Five.
Wait a minute, you need a roll call. You need a roll call.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Mr. Bucklehide, roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Student trustee Ramirez.
Hi.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Hi.
Trustee Osterling.
Hi.
Trustee Brown.
Hi.
Trustee Silver.
Hi.
Trustee Wa.
Hi.
Trustee Martin.
Hi.
Trustee Fellow.
Hi.
Vote is seven zero with student trustee I.
Thank you, Mr. Bucklehide. Next up is Agenda Item Number Five, which is Introductions and Recognitions. Do we have any this evening?
Well, I would like to give a big shout out to my students from Cal State Northridge's Educational Leadership Program. They are actually, they tuned in to watch the Budget Committee meeting last Wednesday, and they are tuning in this evening to listen to the board discuss and hopefully approve our budget for this year. It is a class in the doctoral program, and it is about community college leadership, budget, and enrollment management. So, welcome to ELPS, 720 students out there around.
Welcome. We're glad to have you join us. Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Do we have any public comments?
We have two public comments that are non-agenda, and then we have one comment per item I-12 that I will read at that time.
Okay. Mr. Bucklehide, please.
All right. First comment is from Carol Philandra. Good evening, Board of Trustees. First, I'd like to thank Alex for reading my public comments, as I am currently teaching the Veterans Transitions course at Cal State LA this evening. Thank you, Alex. You're welcome. Next, I want to express my deep gratitude for being presented with the opportunity to be the case manager and the interim director of our Veterans Resource Center. Thank you for entrusting me with this responsibility. Thank you for trusting us to create the safe space, the one-of-a-kind learning environment, and the camaraderie so desperately needed and earned by our student veterans. When I think back on our collective journey, it makes me chuckle to remember how I started our veterans' club and became its inaugural president just by selling candy bars in the quad. As Doc and I built up the veterans' club, we faced some extremely challenging obstacles, from selling candy bars in the quad to getting that tiny little office in the CC Building, from the CC Building to the original VRC in the R Building, and from the R Building to our current phenomenal location in the W Building, it has been one heck of a bumpy road. It often felt as if we were at a complete standstill. Fortunately, we had the amazing support of Patty DeOrange Martin, Dr. Cynthia Alivo, and the other members of this board, past and present. Without you, our VRC would not be what it is today. Thanks to your unparalleled dedication, we prevailed. This month, we celebrated the 10-year anniversary of opening our new and improved VRC. Let me tell you, it has been quite a joyous adventure. Even in the midst of national unrest and despite the adversities placed upon us by the pandemic, we have continued to support our student veterans in the ways that matter the most. It is with overwhelming pride that I announced that we have witnessed the highest graduation, transfer, and completion rates of student veterans in our history. Furthermore, I am confident that we have significantly shortened the equity gap for veterans seeking disabled student programs and services. The PCC VRC remains one of the best in the state and one of the best in our proud nation, a title we have maintained for four consecutive years. I know that I have quite the pair of shoes to fill following in Patty's steps, but I have walked so many of those steps beside her over these past 12 years. We have always shared the same passion for our college and for our student veterans, and I will continue that legacy in the years to come. We are embarking on a new chapter with ever more amazing resources, programs, and support services for our veterans. Whenever we celebrate our veterans, I stop and pause to remember those we have lost. Those losses cut me deeply, but they always renew my sense of purpose and my dedication to supporting those who have served our country. At the VRC, we engage in important and life-changing services for our veterans, and I am eternally grateful to have the opportunity to be a part of something so crucial. A very simple thank you does not even come close to the sense of gratitude I have in getting to support our student veterans and for the support that I have personally received from the members of this board. The positive change that we can bring to our community will never cease to amaze me. Thank you for allowing me to be "present" in quotes tonight. Kindest regards, Carol. The next item is pending, just a second. All right, the next item is signed from the PCC Tabe, the Association for Black Employees. It reads, "To the members of the Pasadena Area Community College Board of Trustees, when Pasadena City College adopted a new and improved mission statement in March of 2019, it was initially met with resistance, but it was done. The emphasis was on being an equity-minded learning community dedicated to enriching students' academic, personal, and professional lives. This was a positive change for the college, one that had campus-wide input and was supposed to set the college on a path for us to focus on serving our students better. It seemed that the trustees also took this focus to heart. That is why many members of our PCC community were pleased when the trustees took a stance on various social issues. For instance, on September 11th, 2019, the board, for the first time, passed Resolution Number 622 in support of National Hispanic Heritage Month. And again, on May 20th, 2020, the board passed Resolution Number 646 in opposition to xenophobia and affirming commitment to the safety of Asian-American communities. And lastly, on June 17th, 2020, the board passed Resolution Number 653 in denouncing the killing of unarmed black African-American citizens and affirming our commitment to black African-American student success. We thank those trustees who spoke in support of the board being a body that acts intentionally and consistently by discussing resolutions that directly impact the lives and futures of our PCC students, staff, and faculty. With these resolutions, our communities were encouraged. However, after hearing the discussion by some of the trustees at the August 19th, 2020 meeting about not wanting to even discuss something that would directly impact the student population that the trustees supposedly support, we are simply disappointed. This disappointment was briefly short-lived, as trustee Wa requested at the September board meeting to have the resolution brought up at the October meeting. Yet, here we are. October meeting, no discussion of Resolution Number 658, Resolution supporting Proposition 16 for the November 3, 2020 general election, to repeal Proposition 209 and reinstate affirmative action in public contracting, hiring, and public education. It has been made clear that the values of the trustees are superficial and do not carry beyond the makeup of this room where resolutions are passed for the sake of passing them and take no action when needed. More than 40 years ago, President Lyndon B. Johnson described affirmative action as a vital tool in the struggle to provide all Americans with equal opportunity. This is the next and more profound stage of the battle for civil rights, Johnson asserted. We seek not just equality as a right and a theory, but equality as a fact as a result. Affirmative action helps historically underserved and oppressed communities be able to advance where they would otherwise would not. It also promotes a more tolerant community because it exposes people to a variety of cultures and ideas that are different from their own. Members of ACT implore you to support affirmative action and other race and gender-conscious policies as vital tools in the struggle to provide all with equal opportunity, to promote diversity in academic and professional settings, and to give each and every one of us a fair chance to compete. If we, as a college, are in fact committed to equity and inclusion, then affirmative action must be restored. If, in fact, black lives matter, then affirmative action matters. We encourage the continued reflection, learning, and conversations that, while hard, are absolutely necessary at this time if our college and specifically our Board of Trustees are serious about meeting the mission at the core of who we are at PCC. Enough talk, act. In solidarity, ACT, Association of Latino Employees, Coalition of Pacific, I'm sorry, Asian-Pacific Employees, and the Association of Black Employees. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bucklehide. We are now on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is to approve the minutes for our most recent meeting, which is regular business meeting number eight, held on September 9th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second. I'll second the motion, and this will be a roll call vote. So, Mr. Bucklehide, again.
Student trustee Ramirez.
Hi.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Hi.
Trustee Osterling.
Hi.
Trustee Brown.
Hi.
Trustee Silver.
Hi.
Trustee Wa.
Hi.
Trustee Martin.
Trustee Martin, you are muted, sir.
Hi.
Trustee Fellow.
Hi.
The vote is seven to zero with student trustee I.
Thank you, Mr. Bucklehide. We're now moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is Board Member on Statewide Committees Reporting Out. Any reports?
Okay, so I, I had a meeting. The Accreditation and Policy Review Committee met on the, I guess that was on the 18th, and we reviewed two policies, which are in your package for approval. But we also had, the committee members had the opportunity of discussing and hearing an update and the Iser report, which of course is the institutional self-evaluation of the college as we prepare for accreditation. So, I would like to encourage you, Board members, now, it's already on the website, and this is a good time for you to start reading and familiarizing yourself with the excellent report that was prepared by all the colleagues, the different groups on campus. So, please take time to read them because it's good that you know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Brown. I think I incorrectly said we're on Agenda Item Nine, and that's wrong. We're on Agenda Item Eight, which is Board Committees Reporting Out.
Right.
Thank you, Berlinda. Any other Board Committees reporting out today? Trustee Martin.
Thank you. So, right before this meeting was a Facility Committee meeting. We had a report from the consultants, Gensler, who are working on the Technology Master Plan. They did a lot in data research on students, and in particular, the students who are in need of technology. And they had a wonderful presentation with a lot of statistics, and I think that's been and then we also got a report on the Seraphim Building, and the job walk, or virtual job walk, has happened or is happening. They hope to start demolition on, the contract to rebuild the new Seraphim Building will come in two parts. The first part is the demo part, and the second part will be the construction part of the new building. Hope to start demo in December. Most of that will be in Most of that will be interior, working on hazardous materials. Shortly thereafter, sometime maybe January, February, we might actually see some real parts of the building coming down. And then hopefully sometime in April, we'll see real parts of the new building starting to go up. And they will all be cutting the ribbon sometime around November of 2022. And that's a quick summary of the Facility Committee. If I can, I also, and I guess I could quickly report on the Budget and Audit Committee. The number-one item for that committee was the budget that we're going to talk about later, so I'll skip on that. We did get and reviewed very carefully the final 311 report for last year for 2020. We did discuss the financing and how the financing might work for the Seraphim Building and how the financing, I'm sorry, might work if we are forced into state deferrals and the need for revenue anticipation notes and trans. And then finally, we did a very brief review on our PARs investments, which I'm pleased to report are doing very well. So that is a quick summary of the Budget and Audit Committee. And I'll just ask any of the members if there's something important I missed to just speak up.
Thank you, trustee Martin. Any Agenda Item Eight, any other board committees reporting out? Okay, we're going to move on to, now, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is Board Member Statewide Committee Reports. Any statewide reports? And we are going to have a separate report on DEI next, so that'll be Agenda Item Ten. Okay, no statewide committees reporting out. Next Agenda Item Number Ten is the CCLC, the League Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Workshops. And the trustees at PCC, including our student trustee David Ramirez, have been very actively participating in this statewide effort to focus on bringing diversity, equity, and inclusion to each one of our campuses. And I want to thank trustee Wa and trustee Ramirez for encouraging that we put this on the agenda tonight. And substantial progress is made by the various workgroups, and I look forward to hearing about those workgroup progresses. And we'll do those in numerical order, starting with Group Number One. And David, trustee Ramirez, I know you're in Group Number One. Do you have any progress to report that your group is undertaking?
Yes, our group is mostly taking a look at EEL plans of other districts and sort of figuring out what kind of looks like best practice. At the moment, I've been pushing for service institutionalizing student input across the board for all districts because some districts don't do as good as PCC. So I'm hoping to sort of put that, you know, try to uniform that around the state.
Okay, thank you, David. Group Number Two is Mission Statement, and I'm participating in that group. And David is also participating in that group as well. And David, thank you for your extra efforts on both of these groups. We are looking at our mission statements and asking ourselves, do our mission statements strongly and adequately demonstrate our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion? And in the process of being on this group, I'm looking at the PCC mission statement. And the direction that the committee is headed generally, the workgroup, and where I'm going to recommend that we head at PCC is we have a fairly recently updated mission statement, and it's fairly comprehensive without being overly long. But there are a lot of additional emphasis and discussion that we think needs to be included in our mission statements. And rather than make our mission statements overly long, the suggestion is that we have an ancillary document, much like one of our fellow community colleges, West Valley, created what they call Guiding Principles. And in those Guiding Principles, we really, they really drill down into making sure how we go about not just saying that we're committed to DEI, but the steps and how we're going to achieve that. And I'm going to submit the West Valley, and it is on the workgroup Google Share Drive, but I'm going to submit the West Valley Guiding Principles as an example or perhaps a starting point for what we at PCC might include. So we are an equity-oriented-minded institution. We do mention that in our mission statement. But I'm going to recommend that we reference an ancillary document, whether we call it Guiding Principles or whatever we decide at PCC we want to call it, where we really drill down and discuss at some level of detail how we're going to go about achieving diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that's the progress that we've made in workgroup number two. And we'll be bringing that back to PCC. Group Number Three, who's Group Number Three, Linda? It's Tammy. Tammy, go ahead.
Tammy. Yeah. We are working on professional development and mentoring that will support DEI. And just one item that is tangible, something that we can all look at right now, is the Vision Resource Center that is available to all of us at PCC. Just Google Vision Resource Center. You sign in with your LancerPoint credentials, and there is a wealth of training in DEI that is online and is already there. It is subscribed to for our state colleges by the CCLC. And so we can take advantage of trainings that are already there and are available to us at no charge in not only DEI and other topics, but certainly in DEI.
Thank you, Tammy. And then Group Number Four, that's you, Linda, correct?
Yeah, so workgroup Four is focused on faculty evaluations and the exit interviews. And it seems like, you know, while at first blush, it seems like trustees don't have a lot to do. So we've had, so all across the workgroups, we are now bringing in experts to talk to the trustees. So all of our workgroups, so roughly the 40 trustees, community members, and students who are on these workgroups. So two weeks ago, we had, I want to thank trustee Ramirez. We listened to the student voices, so trustee Ramirez was among those. We had the Triple CT Student Trustee, the President of the Student Senate, as well as trustee Julian Johnson, who is the other student trustee who participates on these DEI workgroups. And their voices were, it was really powerful for us to hear this. They talked about wanting greater inclusion in some of, in many of these areas. And actually, what they have asked for is actually recommended by the State Academic Senate. It is supported by the State Academic Senate. So that was really encouraging. And we also had President Databoy, the President of the CSSOs. And he also talked about how all districts could do some things, could do many things differently to be more inclusive and to really promote and encourage diversity. So we're going to make all of these discussions with these experts available to all trustees, not just those who are on the workgroups. And it will be posted on the CCL website under, near the trustee webinars. I actually asked them to create a different group, so we'll have to see where that is. But I'll send the link over to Jim and who can, or to Erica, and they can share it with everyone. But I hope, and if anyone wants to come in and listen, so we meet at nine o'clock on Mondays for an hour to hear these diverse voices. The one we just had last week was, or it was about minding the gap. And we had Jennifer Taylor-Mendoza, and I forget, sorry, I forgot the second speaker. But anyway, they gave some really interesting perspectives on how we, as trustees, can really be more engaged in areas where we always kind of kept ourselves at arm's length. And so one of the questions I had asked was how do we, how do we, as trustees, become more engaged in the faculty evaluation and exit interviews? And they talked about data that we could ask for that helps show us we're removing the needle, how we could look at the progress that we're making in, by looking at exit interviews, in whether or not we're retaining our diverse faculty that we are, that we are hiring, that we're putting a lot of effort into hiring. So it does seem like there is opportunity for the trustees to be more engaged. So I think that, I think the toolkits that come out of this will be really interesting. And I just want to talk about, there's going to be a virtual town hall. We encourage all trustees to attend. It will be the second Thursday of November, so I think it's like November 12th. We're going to do it at seven o'clock in the evening to hopefully get all the trustees who have to, those who have been challenged by the working schedule. So it's to also attend. And it's really going to be an opportunity for all trustees to kind of come in and talk about what their barriers are. And then we're going to go into breakout rooms and talk about how we can help each other kind of move this diversity equity needle. So I'll send more information out about that. We'll be doing a safe date, and I hope that all of our trustees on this board will attend. Thanks.
Well.
Linda, and then Dr. Andrew Janus, please.
Hot off the presses, I've actually been appointed to the CEO Race, Equity, and Inclusion Excellence Task Force. And so that is a group of CEOs who will start meeting probably in the next month or so to do some parallel work to what the trustees are doing right now. So that just came out like an hour ago, so yay.
Yay, Erica. Yes, and we'll be having the CEOs. So Erica, I hope that you might even join us on, I think it's November 9th. We have the CEOs who are going to be speaking to the trustees and giving us a perspective, and we are pairing them with the Academic Senate. So Dr. Lester will be kind of leading that, but I hope you will join. Yeah, we're all waiting to hear the CEO's perspective and to be able to partner with you.
Awesome.
One of the things that our group has been talking about is how the trustees can become more involved in the making sure that our hiring practices are very important for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and making sure without directly getting involved in those practices and without micromanaging those practices, how we can make sure that those hiring procedures are in fact, do promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I'm very proud of the procedures that Dr. Andrew Janus has implemented here at PCC. And I thought it would be worthwhile for you, Erica, just to share briefly how we're trying to improve our DEI practices in the way that we hire and select our administrators and faculty.
Yeah, so I can give a current example of what we're doing around administrators. We're, we just completed, and it's on the agenda later, the search for the Chief Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer for the college. And we're, through that process, selected Dr. Carrie Bolan. And we are currently, right now, in the process of doing our Vice President of Instruction search, since we are sadly losing Dr. Terry Juney to retirement in December. But anyway, the upshot of that, of how we've changed the process is number, is really with looking at utilizing a blind screening process. And what that means is that when the Advisory Committee for the hiring is looking at applications, they are looking at applications that have been redacted in terms of names and other identifiable information, where somebody went to college, you know, the kinds of things that signal that might bring up implicit bias or people might make assumptions about one candidate being more qualified than another. And in that blind evaluation, also having the committee itself broken up into groups that really are laser-focused on competency areas. And so rather than the old frightening days of a candidate walking in and facing a group of 15 people sitting around a big table, you know, each person asking a question, no follow-ups, those kinds of things. Instead, a candidate, for example, in the Chief Diversity position, was basically spent four hours with small groups of the committee. And in addition to that, those individuals who made it to the next level, meaning that they were meeting with me, also had an opportunity to meet with our affinity groups, our Tabe, Ale, Cape, and our LGBTQ employee groups. And they provided feedback to me as after, as part of my consideration of each of the candidates. And so throughout the process, what happened was a holistic review of those individuals. And once each of the four groups, small groups, had met with candidates, they went back into, you know, and they went in to talk about who was going to the next level interviews. The scores were already done. The scores had been logged, and so what the committee was looking at was really what came out of the holistic review of each of the candidates. And so, you know, they, you often say that when you hire an administrator, when you hire a faculty member or a classified staff member, you're making a million-dollar decision because you're making a decision about somebody who could potentially stay at the college 10, 20, 30 years, and over that lifetime or over that time period. There, it's a significant investment. So it makes sense that we would put more time into how we bring people through our process. And the model, which Vice President Bob Lizinski brought to us, and I have to say Candace Jones did a fabulous job chairing that committee and getting him through. And that committee chairing role and the way Candace approached it included implicit bias training, readings, all kinds of ways to help the committee really look at, what am I assuming I'm looking for in these candidates? And how do I not do that? And this was on top of us also, working with the USC Center on Race Equity to review our job description and to help us, help us identify places that maybe our job description would discourage a diverse candidate from applying. We also utilize their PRISM system to get the word out to candidates from all over the place. So I think what you're seeing, and again, we'll see it again, we're seeing it right now with the Vice President of Instruction Hiring Committee that's being chaired by Crystal Colross, is you're seeing a much more in-depth, much, I think you just get so much more feedback from it. And it is the type of hiring process that really welcomes candidates that maybe would never have gotten to the interview point if we were utilizing a traditional approach where we were maybe too focused on those personal characteristics and the assumptions behind them. So I think we've, I think we've got a lot of great ideas. And the Bob Lizinski's area did surveys with the people who were part of the interview process, meaning they were candidates. And they also surveyed committee members. And we are taking that information and, you know, going to continue continuous quality improvement. That's our job. So just one of the things we're working on, it's really exciting.
And thank you, Erica. And to hear you describe that, it sounds like a wonderful process. But where the rubber meets the road is if it leads to the results that we intend, which is to improve and increase our diversity, equity, and inclusion. And for the process just concluded, can you tell me what the results were?
Well, the result of this is that the person we're hiring, Carrie Bolan, is African-American. Well, the result of this, uh, is that the person we're hiring, Carrie Bolin, is African-American female. And, um, we had in the finals, we had, um, we had a good diversity of, uh, candidates. I'm not sure it's appropriate for me to name all of them just because they, it is a confidential process, but I will say that the final pool was, uh, completely diverse.
Good. So, so the, the, the process is working.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. And you know, one of the other things that we talked about in our group was also being thoughtful about how we prepare um, job descriptions and qualifications for a job to make certain that we don't make them unduly overly um, uh, narrow and therefore, uh, reduce the pool of available candidates and the diversity of the pool of available candidates. Um, okay. Anything else on, on, um, Agenda Item 10? We are going to. Uh, thank you Sandra, uh, trustee Chen Lau, pardon me, I didn't see your hand up and, uh, you're up please.
Thank you. I certainly will like to, um, commend the administration is, you know, especially um, the president and her team for really taking to heart, um, the board's resolution on after, uh, on the George Floyd killings and what the board can do to take action with DEI. You know, it's certainly hiring the chief diversity office was one action that was put part of the resolution. And we know that that's just the beginning. Um, certainly we know that, um, we have a institution that will, that still have work needs to be done and that having a chief diversity officer is not the miracle. Um, that is going to take the work of all of us to continue. And I'd like to continue to see the work in DEI be done. Um, but I do think that this is along the lines of the board's commitment to DEI. And also that, um, it's along the lines of the resolution. And it's a way for the board to have taken strong action, not just by committing, um, resources, by really trying to change the institution culture. And I like to commend my colleagues, um, and the president for putting our words into action. Thank you.
Uh, thank you trustee Chen Lau. Um, uh, I, I see no further, uh, hands up on this item. We're going to move on to Agenda Item D, which is our, uh, combined consent calendar. And, and as is now our tradition, um, to move through this more quickly. We'll hold a single vote on, uh, the consent calendar items E through G. And then we'll also have a, a vote on item H. And before I go to the vote for consent calendar items E through G, is there any requests from any trustees to pull any of these, um, items out for individual discussion or consideration? Um, seeing none, um, I'm going to, uh, request a motion for, um, approval of consent calendar items, um, E through G. And specifically it's E1 through G18. Do I hear a motion?
Move approval.
Thank you. And we have a second.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded and, um, uh, roll call vote please, uh, Mr. Bucklehead.
Student trustee Ramirez. Aye. Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
Seven zero student trustee I.
Thank you, Mr. Bucklehead. And, uh, we'll now move on to, um, Agenda Item H, which is also consent calendar. And it's for personnel, uh, in which the student trustee does not vote. And do I hear a motion? Oh, uh, well, let me start out. Is there any, um, requests to, um, call out any of these consent items for separate conversation or discussion? Trustee Fellow.
Yes, I just want to, uh, shout out as I usually do to, uh, some of our longtime employees who are retiring. And we have, um, Sarah Flores, who's been with us for 31 years in the, uh, sup- supervisor of facility services. And I would think, um, she did an outstanding job these 31 years. And Sylvia Jimenez Morano, um, who is with the Community Education Center. So I wish them, and I think we all do, well in their retirement. Thank you. And I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, thank you trustee fellow. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. And trustee fellow, I want to thank you once again for, um, always, um, making note of our, our longstanding employees and recognizing them. That's, that's, uh, they're the, the key to what makes PCC, uh, Aspen Top 10, uh, College three times in a row. And, um, so it's been moved and seconded, um, and, um, um, we'll go to a roll call vote for Agenda Item H. Mr. Bucklehead again, please.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
Vote is seven zero.
Uh, thank you. And we have a lot more business to conduct tonight. We have, um, uh, we're on to Agenda Item I, which is action items recommended for the board's approval. And, um, I'm going to add as a point of order and knowing we have to go through roll call votes. Is it, uh, possible, is it acceptable that we would do Agenda Items one through four as a single vote? And if that's possible, great. If it's not possible procedurally, then we'll go through them individually. Uh, trustee fellow, your thoughts as our resident parliamentarian?
Um, I would like us to do that, but, um, um, are we going to have a report on the budget? Or not?
Yeah, I, I, I think when you take action, I think you have to take action on each item.
All right. Well, we'll do it that way. If, if, if that's the, uh, the rule of board, I don't want to violate our parliamentary procedure. So we'll take these, uh, one at a time and we'll start out with item I1. And that's presentation of the adoption of the proposed 2020 to 2021 budget and fund allocations. And do we have a presentation?
I believe we do. Uh, Dr. Mike Bush.
Okay, Dr. Bush, take it away, sir.
Thank you so much. I need to share my screen.
So, uh, Mr. Bucklehead, you'll need to unshare your screen and then, uh, Mr. Bush will, Dr. Bush will share his.
Thank you so much. Well, we finally get to adopt our budget. As the board recalls, we had a extended calendar. And we would normally do this in September, but we're now adopting in October. And it'll eventually, everything will catch up by the end of the year, but some of the timing issues will be bumps in the road as we go. To review the overall framework of the budget, um, you may recall that the legis- the governor had a proposed, may revise, that the legislature rejected. And both the senate and the assembly adopted identical budget, which meant it was passed to the governor. And there wasn't the normal, um, conference committee or some referred to as the big five to come up with a budget compromise. So what the governor and the legislative leaders agreed was to meet and see if they could hammer out their plans sort of informally and then agree on a path forward. The big sticking points was how do they handle federal relief? Uh, the legislature was very optimistic that it was going to occur and wanted to include it in the budget. The governor did not want to include it in the budget and wanted to have the assumption it's not coming. And then if it does materialize, have relief. And the legislature was very strong about preserving education funding. The governor had originally planned on, um, balancing the budget through three means. One would be using up all the reserve emergency accounts that we've been setting aside for years. Two, to do some deferrals. And three, to do program reductions of roughly nine percent across the state. The compromise proposal eliminates immediate cuts to community colleges, but relies heavily on deferrals. So it's deferring 1.5 billion in, um, revenues that would flow to the community colleges and not paying it until the following fiscal year. So operationally, we're able to continue our programs, but we'll get an IOU. We won't get paid. And if there had been federal relief, they would have, um, reduced that to 7.9 million. Would have been receipt, rescinded so roughly in half. Um, there was not the federal relief and as you know, they're still discussing it. But the drop dead date is already passed, so the deferrals of 1.5 billion are part of the budget. The budget does provide 120 million block grant to help address the impact of the pandemic. It does not have a COLA nor does it have growth funding. And it extends the student center funding formula, hold harmless, all the way to 23, 24. It does include a temporary reduction in pension costs. The rates were reduced by two percentage points for this year and next year. Um, but after that, they go back to where they were. Uh, you may recall the governor had set aside money to buy down the, uh, pension liability. But instead of doing that, it, they felt they could get more relief to districts by two years, um, subsidizing the cost. It expresses the legislature's intent to maintain all classified employees and specifically prohibits districts from laying off custodial, transportation or child nutrition workers for lack of work, um, and lack of funds. This is primarily, uh, directed at our K-12, uh, colleagues. But it does cover us for custodial. It has 15 million Dreamers incentive grant for the entire system. Another big, it does have Cal, fully funds Cal grants. But one of the other sticking points between the governor and the legislature was the Calbright College. That's, um, Chancellor Oakley's online college initiative. The legislature wanted to eliminate it 100%. The governor wanted to continue it. They compromised on a 25% reduction in their budget. And to recoup $40 million of one-time money they had not spent from last year. So. And as you heard before, it does fund the Seraphim Building. Deferrals are, are not new. They had, Governor Brown had some deferrals and then during the Great Recession and then eventually paid them off. But they were much smaller than these deferrals. The, it enables program funding despite the nine percent reduction to the California Community College system. So the system wide still has a reduction, but individual programs continue. It's a one-time budget savings for the state. It can cause cash flow issues for districts and it will cause cash flow issues for us. It puts stresses on ending balances, which is important to boards because once we can't make our payroll and we don't have any ending balance. The controller's office can step in. That's the definition of bankruptcy for us. It requires districts to issue tax revenue anticipation notes. Um, commonly referred to as trans, which is a sh- similar to a short-term borrowing where we, we get cash, but we have to pay it back with the same proceeds of that year. The deferrals will roll forward until they're paid off. By that, I mean every year we will be faced with the same cash shortage, the same deferrals that we have right now of $25 million. And we will need to borrow every year to cover that cash. And then when the state gives us the money, we use that money to pay off the short-term borrowing. Deferrals will make future program reductions more likely and more profound by the state. Because they've pretty much have maxed out this option. The deferral schedule is really bizarre. Because the first money deferred takes the longest to pay back and it works in reverse. So in February, we will stop getting money from the state. And that we will not get our February apportionment until November. Our March will receive in October, our April and September, our May and August and June and July. And this schedule reflects the optimism the legislature had for federal relief. Because if we would have received federal relief, the first three deferrals would have been eliminated. And then we would be just dealing with short-term deferrals. But we are where we are. Looking at the, the overall budget for next year, it, here's a state apportionment of 148 million. Total unrestricted general fund is 171 million, almost 172 million dollars. There is this Calsters on behalf fund. That's simply an accounting mechanism for the state to calculate their, um, unfunded liability for pensions. So they give us the payment and then they, we expense it also. Whatever they give us, it also reported as an expense. On our expense side, our salaries and benefits are 153 million or 89% of our budget. It's important to, um, acknowledge it takes people to educate people. And, um, that is a high number, but certainly manageable. Supplies and materials, almost 2 million. Operating expenses and services is 15 million. That includes things like utilities, um, consultants, um, um, insurance, things like that. Uh, capital outlay of 200,000. Most of our capital outlay occurs in our capital, uh, funds and not out of the unrestricted general fund. And other outgoing and transfers of 1.1 for total expenses of 171, eight, nine, four. We do have a budget surplus of $95,000. Will we set up our budget? Um, we do have over $300,000 of requests already for that 95,000. So once the budget is adopted, we'll be working to see how we're going to allocate that 95. Here's a chart of the fund balances by fund. It has all the funds listed and I won't go through the detail, but it's in the budget report also of the various fund balances. And you can see our ending balance total is 95, um, million dollars. It, um, you can also see in income, we have a big increase and that's in the capital facilities fund. Because we're going to, um, uh, have the state money coming in. Okay, these, this, that was last year. This is this year's fund balance. And this is where you can see the increase of, of the capital facility. Where did it go to? It's up here. Right here, we have 41.9 of income coming in for the Seraphim Building. We have a large, um, student financial aid. You can see that that's a high, high fund balances also. Um, the Budget Audit Committee in the last board meeting for the tenant budget did offer some suggestions for improving our document. And Mr. Martin had highlighted the need for, uh, FTE positions. There's a detail in the budget document. But in comparing the years, you can see the academic positions went from 499 to 480. And this is FTE's full-time e- equivalents. Uh, classified from 450 to 440. The total, um, full-time equivalents went from 950 to 921. And that was due to matriculation. The main reason the academic positions went down is because the state lowered our, uh, FON, our faculty obligation number. our faculty obligation number. So that's the main reason those positions went down. Also, Trustee Silver has suggestion on having a schedule on grants and entitlements. And there's a detailed one in the, it's the last page of the budget booklet. In it, we list all the federal grants, which totals 17 million. We list all our state grants, which are 30.5 million, local of almost a half million, for a total of $48 million worth of grants and entitlements. This does not include Fund III's parking fees, health center fees, or instructional equipment carryovers. Also, we had a request to discuss the CARES Act. The CARES Act is very complicated. The federal government came out with the CARES Act. The first, and this is last year's numbers. First, we received both, we got the student portion and then the institutional portion, both of 7.6 million dollars. Then we received a Hispanic-serving institution grant. This is a grant for the institution, and it's money that's used on all our students. And then we got this really bizarre COVID-19 block grant in the budget that we could start spending early last year, but we chose not to. But it's made up of the state's CARES Act grant, the federal, along with a supplement from the state money. And they have similar rules, but they all vary slightly. Last year, we gave out 4.2 million dollars worth of student direct aid. And we have a balance of 3.3, almost 3.4 million to give out current budget year. Our institutional, we only spent 673 million. And it was really a lot of refunds. We were able to refund students, parking, students' tuition, and we had council travel. And then we started some faculty training, and we just got into computers and some PPE. This year, we, we still have our 3.4 million of student grants to give out, but we have already spent 12, another 12 million, 12,000 in PPE, 405 on computers, and then 107 on some refunds. And then, very important, we have encumbered significant dollar amounts for a total of 2.5 million for faculty training. And this was twofold. It was faculty signed up over the summer to have training and distance education to improve their skills. And then also, we're paying stipends to convert classes to distance ed, so. And then we have an encumbrance on technology and PPE. And we will have the federal completely spent by December 30th for the COVID-19 block grant. And then we're going to have the state, we're not going to, planning on touching that. This year, we'll use it for next fiscal year. That completes my presentation and available to answer any questions the board might have.
Board members, any, any questions? Trustee Ramirez.
Hi, thank you, Dr. Bush. I just have a question on the state portion for the COVID-19 block grant, and I wanted to ask, what are your plans for spending that money?
Okay, if I go back up. The state block grant, we're currently carrying it over. We are very concerned about when students return to campus, the modifications we're going to have to put in place to help students return. So we're, we're looking towards that. And we feel we'll have to modify the classrooms to some extent, plus do more disinfecting. And we should have most of student services and the support offices all finished this year on the modifications, but we're really looking to see what we have to do in the classroom.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Hi, my question is around enrollment. And certainly, we're going to see an impact of the decline on enrollment. And this question is either for you, Dr. Bush, or Dr. Andrew Jonas. If there is a decline, if you could just explain, you know, what, what you're seeing out there. And also, the follow-up question would be, what are the strategies for the college to, to encourage more enrollment?
Okay, I'd be happy to start and then turn it over to Dr. Andrew Jonas. First of all, there is a emergency waiver we filed for our, for last year, which paid us off of our P1 pre-COVID numbers. The same waiver will be available for this fiscal year, so we'll be paid off of our activity for P1 2019. But that does set us up for a cliff because we know our enrollment is down. In fact, there was an article Dr. Juney shared today that it's down 16% across the country. So the pandemic has really hit college students hard, and many are electing.
I'm like, what percent?
16.
16, thank you.
Crosses is what the article said. We are looking at a number of strategies, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Andrew Jonas.
Well, our number one strategy is to try to get the students back who we lost and, and because online education is not for them. In terms of specific things that we're doing, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Alivo, who can talk about what's happening in outreach and student services.
Yes, thank you so much. We, in Outreach and Transfer Office, we are going to local schools to deliver materials and then hosting virtual events. And I'm happy to report that we have hundreds of our local students who participate in our virtual events. And we're finding that we would like to continue to offer a blend when we go back to on-ground, in-person services. We want to continue to offer a blend of remote offerings because we're finding that a lot of parents and students can join in and get their questions answered about enrollment. We've also taken the opportunity to make a lot of our forms fillable and to make our enrollment process much easier for students to navigate. And so we're really looking forward to having more enrollment, even during this challenging time. Our team is working really hard to ensure that we're getting the word out and we're partnering with our K-12s to get more students enrolled at PCC.
And Erica, you might just briefly want to talk about safe harbor portion.
Yeah, so the, as Dr. Bushard mentioned, we will have hold harmless until 2324. I'm correct about that, right, Mike? 2324? And basically, what it is, is it is a hold harmless because on top of the, you know, obviously, we had COVID, but before we had COVID, the entire system was moving to the student-centered funding formula. So there was a three-year, there was a three-year hold harmless so that colleges could make the transition. But given all of the uncertainty and given the fact that enrollment started to plummet, part of the Budget Act, part of what we, part of going forward, we have an additional two years on the hold harmless. But I want to be clear that we don't want to rest on our laurels because we don't want to get to the fiscal cliff. And when we talk about a fiscal cliff, it means, okay, we're going along okay because we've got stable funding due to hold harmless. But at some point, the hold harmless ends. And so what we need to do is make sure we're really keeping our eye on what is our funding based on now? And how do we make sure that by 2324, we are where we need to be in order to not take a hit?
And Dr. Juney, I see your, your hand up in the participant list, and then we'll go to Trustee Brown.
I just wanted to add a little bit of information because Dr. Bush had indicated that across the nation, enrollments in college and universities is down 16%. We're, we're not that bad. Our, our fall enrollments are down by 7.6%, and our head count is down by 5.3%. So, so we're actually compared to the rest of the system here in California, as well as across the nation. Our drop in enrollment is not as bad as, as what you're hearing. We need to be cautious because students really don't want to be online, so.
No, they don't.
Thank you, Dr. Juney, and Trustee Brown.
Yeah, um, excuse me, wanted to follow up, maybe get some clarification with what Dr. Alivo described in, about the outreach. I was, I'm not sure I understand how this has been taking place, even though most of the schools are closed. So could you kind of, maybe I'm asleep, I don't know. Could you kind of just go back to that outreach that we're doing, where people engage in virtual? How is that done at the schools if these campuses are closed? That's what I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Absolutely. Trustee Brown, we are hosting presentations online. And for example, Arcadia High School, we just conducted a presentation and had 197 participants virtually. These are parents and students who were participating regarding how to enroll here at PCC. And this is being conducted at all of our local area feeder schools, virtually via Zoom. And depending upon the number of participants, we also do it on YouTube so that families can watch together in their homes and then pose their questions to our outreach staff that way. We've done this for New York High School and many of the high schools here locally.
So for instance, for, let's say, Arcadia. So are you engaging with this school itself and their assisting, is there a partnership? What, what, what is it?
Yes, exactly. So to get the word out to parents and students, we're working with the school officials. And they inform the parents and the students about these offerings. And then this, the parents and the students sign up and participate in our virtual events.
Thank you. I am asleep.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up.
I have one more question, sorry. I'm just really interested in this, in this discussion because, you know, the state unemployment rate is at 11%. And there's discussion that community colleges can certainly be that vehicle to help folks get back into either continued education or, you know, certainly back to the workforce. So, you know, I would like to see, maybe not at this meeting, and maybe at a, at a, the next one, you know, what we would be doing in, in those areas as well. Especially also since we have free tuition for high school kids who are enrolled, who are going to be fully enrolled. I, I just wanted to, to see how we are, you know, marketing our free tuition to the, to the public.
Are we frozen?
Anybody want to tackle that one, Erica?
I'm sorry, I thought Trustee Chen Lau was asking for information at a subsequent meeting.
Yes, yes.
All right, my apologies. My apologies. Dr. Juney.
I, I can say a little bit about it right now. I mean, Dr. Alivo mentioned how we are reaching out to the high schools from a recruiting perspective, but, but we're still very active in offering dual enrollment in the high schools. And the high schools are continuing to ask us for classes there online, just like we are here on our campus, but they're basically being offered to their students. And so, so our dual enrollment program, actually, the numbers of classes and the number of students is doing really well, considering the circumstances. And, and we're continuing to reach out to other high schools in regard to the classes that they're asking for and what we're offering. And so, and so that touches on that. I, I think the other thing, though, in regard to CTE is that there is some difficulty in regard to some of those programs because many of those programs to complete require face-to-face instruction. And, and we are doing a little bit of that right now in auto and welding and in the health sciences. But to expand that, we're, we're very dependent on the status of the pandemic and what the County of Los Angeles will allow us to do.
And Dr. Juney, your work on dual enrollment has just been terrific, fantastic. And I really like to commend you and your staff for just the wonderful work and outreach you've done on dual enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, I don't see any more hands. And so we'll close out the discussion. This is action item I1 and the adoption of the budget. I don't think we've had a motion yet for this. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move approved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, and we've already had the discussion. So we're going to go right to the roll call vote. Mr. Bucklehead, please.
Point of order, and I might be incorrect. Is this the information item, and then we have a public hearing about the budget? And then the action is I3? Just checking.
Yes, you are correct.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And that'll save us a roll call. So we, thank you, Alex. So we've completed the presentation, and we'll move on to item number two, which is the, the public hearing. And so I formally open a public hearing, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll formally open a public hearing on the proposed 2021 budget and fund allocations. And then we'll take the motion, which is item number three, correct?
Close the motion.
You have to close the hearing.
Okay, all right. And then we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, everybody, for helping me through that parliamentary procedure. And now we'll, we'll move on to the vote, which is item number three, which is the adoption of the budget.
There you need a motion.
Okay, now we need a motion. Moved, and I think I heard a second there.
Yeah.
Moved, okay, moved and seconded. And we'll go to the roll call vote now, Mr. Bucklehead. And thank you for correcting me on that point of order.
Absolutely, thank you. Student Trustee Ramirez.
Aye.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Barton.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
Seven zero with the student trustee voting aye.
Okay, thank you. And now we move on to item I4. That's to adopt the annual 311 financial report, which we submit to the state, the chancellor's office, for the fiscal year of 2019 and 20, and the budget report for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Do we have a presentation on this item?
We, we do.
Okay, Dr. Bush.
Okay, Heather Wingard's going to present the 311, and she has some slides to share.
Okay.
Good evening. Alex, can I share my screen?
You should be good to go, so let's give it a shot.
Okay.
We see your presentation. You can go ahead and hit slideshow now. There we go, perfect.
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the annual financial report for fiscal year 2019, 20, referred to as the 311 annual, which is on the agenda, of course, for approval of the next item. The report contains several different types of financial reports for all funds district-wide. It's kind of like a tax return. It is required to be. It is required to be submitted every year and there's a lot of schedules, rules and regulations to follow for each type of schedule. The annual financial report and budget report is comprised of several schedules, some of which I will display as a snapshot of and point out some relevant information. The first slide is a represents, it represents the analysis of the fifty percent test, which includes expenses from the general fund unrestricted only. The test is a computation to ensure that at least fifty percent of our expenses in the general unrestricted fund is for instruction. The district has always spent more than fifty percent in instruction. Pasadena City College for the current year is fifty-three point oh two percent for qualified instructional expenses. Last fiscal year, two thousand eighteen nineteen, the percentage was fifty-four point twenty-two. The next slide shows a snapshot of expenses by program, also known as activity for the both the general fund unrestricted and restricted combined. Note the total expenditures for the instructional programs on the bottom line is over eighty-four million dollars. The next slide shows a snapshot of expenses of income and expenses by account number or object code. It also has the ending fund balance is displayed. If you notice that the net increase in the fund balance for the general fund unrestricted is six hundred and forty-eight thousand, bringing the total fund balance to over thirty-one million dollars. This fund balance represents over eighteen percent of the general fund expenditures before transferred. The next slide or this slide shows the transfers made during the current fiscal year. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars was transferred to the parking fund to backfill loss of revenue. Thirty-six thousand was transferred to the childcare fund for lease payments. Five point five million was transferred to the capital project funds, which includes six hundred thousand of tech refresh. And three million was transferred to a self-insurance fund, which includes two million for the post other post-employment benefit fund called OPEB and one million to property and liability funds. This slide shows trans, excuse me, this slide shows historical costs that the district incurred for pensions, which includes both pers and stirs and the projected costs for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The rates here in this column is a combined percentage increase cost. It's not the rate that the district contributes to the pension. Do you have any questions?
I don't see any hands up in the participation screen. Any questions by the trustees? All right, seeing none. Heather, is that the completion of your report?
Yes, it is.
I see an agenda item four, though we also have the budget report. Is there a presentation on that before we go to the motion? Dr. Bush.
On, you're on agenda item four?
Yes, I four.
That was the presentation of the three eleven.
Okay, all right. I I got confused because it says and budget report, but that was contained within.
Yes.
Okay, so then we are ready to to call through a motion for item I four, which is to adopt the annual three eleven financial report. Moved and do we do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and we will go to a roll call vote again, Mr. Bucklehead.
Student trustee Ramirez.
Aye.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
The vote is seven zero with student trustee aye.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bucklehead. We're now moving on to item I five, adoption of education, protection account, funding and expenditure. Do we have a presentation on this item?
I do not have a presentation, but I'd like to introduce the item.
Okay, Dr. Bush, please.
Back in two thousand twelve during the recession, the electorate passed proposition thirty, which was the Schools for Local Public Safety Protection Act, which included a higher sales tax for the state as well as a higher income tax on the top wage earners. That was a temporary measure that was re-upped under proposition fifty-five in twenty sixteen. Part of that proposition requires the community to college to determine how they're spending the funds. And it's up to the local board to designate how we're spending the funds. We treat, it's not extra money, but just a component of the state money that we receive. Traditionally, we have dedicated those funds to faculty salaries and benefits, which is a qualifying expenditure and we're requesting the same this year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bush. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, no discussion. And we'll go to a roll call vote. Mr. Bucklehead again, please.
Student trustee Ramirez.
Aye.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
The vote is seven zero with a student trustee aye.
Thank you, Mr. Bucklehead. And it gives me great pleasure to bring forward agenda item I six. And that's the declaration of candidacy of Linda S. Wong for Association of Community College Trustees. That's the ACCT as a director for the Pacific Region. And this requires, in in order for a candidate to be nominated, it requires a motion and approval by the board. So any discussion on agenda item I six before we go to a vote?
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
I would like a brief synopsis of what exactly would Ms. Wong be doing?
Well, trusty Wa, she's going to be doing a lot. She's pretty darn busy.
Well, thank you, trustee Brown, for this opportunity. So as the director of Pacific Region, I joined, so I would, I am putting my name in to replace trustee Bernie Reinerston from San Diego, who is turning out. So this will be not for in twenty twenty-two. And so this letter of support then allows me to go forward to California and ask for their endorsement before I go out to the the national for their interviews. So it's really important this, that California be represented. This has been one of the objectives of the the league since trustee Mary Figueroa from Riverside was our last California trustee that would have been represented. And she actually encouraged us to start getting more involved. California has almost thirty percent of all of the community colleges. So it's important that when we advocate for legislation, that the California voice be heard. California has also been a leader in the diversity equity work, which is very high on the national agenda also. And so I will be advocating for that.
Thank you, trustee Wa.
Thank you. And and as the, on the nominating committee for the Pacific Region, I will make sure that it's my task to make sure that that this candidate is nominated and elected. I take that seriously. So can we entertain a motion for item I six?
So I would like to entertain a motion because I do believe it's important for us, especially PCC, to have a voice there, you know, not only helping us, but, you know, just keeping us informed of what the latest things are happening over there and state-wide, nationwide for that matter. So I will definitely make a nomination and motion.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Do I have a second?
I would like to second that.
Moved and seconded and we'll go to a roll call vote for this one. Mr. Bucklehead, please.
Student trustee Ramirez.
Aye.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
I'm going to give an emphatic aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
The vote is seven zero with student trustee aye.
Okay, and now we're going to move on to item number seven and and put trustee Wa in the spotlight once again. This is the declaration of the candidacy of Linda S. Wong to continue on the ACCT, Association of Community College Trustees, Public Policy and Advocacy Committee. And I do have a question for you on this one, Linda. How does your role and terms work for continuing on this committee versus serving as a director at the Pacific Region?
So unlike the director position, this is an appointed position. So it is at the will of the executive director of ACCT. And so I have served for the past year on this public policy and advocacy committee. Ji-Hang Lee, who is the executive director now, or the vice president, I guess now, is actually is the chair of the Public Policy and Advocacy Committee. So he brings forward major issues that are occurring on this national stage and ensures that we are informed and gets feedback on what we need to advocate for. I think, once again, California has been in the forefront. As you know, we for those of us who have visited Washington, we meet with Congresswoman Chu, we meet with Congressman Schiff, who have been very instrumental in moving an educational agenda. And and then we also meet with, and because I've been part of the state, I also meet them with our two senators, Senator Harris, as well as Senator Feinstein. So so I think that California has really, I think a lot of the districts really do look up to us, the states look up to California to be able to help advocate for for legislation that happens nationally to help our students.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again, trustee Wa. Any further discussion on agenda item I seven? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion.
Move approval.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded and no further discussion. And roll call vote, please, Mr. Mr. Bucklehead.
Student trustee Ramirez.
Aye.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
Vote is seven zero with student trustee aye.
Great, thank you. And and Dr. Ender Janus, I'm sure you'll take care of the necessary paperwork to indicate that we, the board has authorized, approved trustee Wa for these positions.
Of course, Mary Thompson will be in the office tomorrow and she will make sure that paperwork gets completed.
Great, thank you.
I want to thank all of my fellow trustees for your support on this. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And we thank you for your service above and beyond serving us at at Pasadena, but serving our statewide and nationwide trustees. And I think that we here at PCC benefit also from that service. So thank you. Moving on to agenda item I eight, this is to approve modifications, additions and deletions to the credit curriculum. Any presentation on this item or or just the attachment to our our agenda?
Dr. Junie?
I I don't have a presentation. This is just the standard curriculum that's being approved and the like. You'll notice that there's quite a bit, quite a few of the courses that are being modified, adding Form Ds, which is the, to allow them to be taught online. And you'll also notice that there's a more than a page of emergency Form Ds as we continue the process because of the the current pandemic. The one thing that I would like to call to your attention is in kinesiology, there is a new course, a CAT ninety-seven, which is intercollegiate athletics esports. And so Pasadena City College is starting down the path to start esport competition here at the college. We we are the first in the state in the community college to start putting this program together. There actually are quite a few esports programs at the CSU and UC level. UC Irvine has a real big program. And and really, I I think this is a great addition to our curriculum because it actually serves students that normally wouldn't be thought of as athletes and will allow us to expand in a way that will include a lot of students in competitions that will benefit them both from the standpoint of teamwork, but also in developing their skills in gaming.
Very cool. Thank you, Dr. Junie. Okay, we need a motion for agenda item I eight. Do we have a motion?
I second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Bucklehead.
Student trustee Ramirez.
Aye.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
The vote is seven zero with student trustee aye.
Okay, motion carries and we move on to agenda item I nine. And I'm going to start off with an apology in case I do not pronounce, make the pronunciations correctly. This is resolution number six six two. We're denouncing the violence in Artsack, Nagorno, Karabakh. And again, I hope I pronounced that correctly and expressing solidarity with those who are impacted by the violence. Do I, is there any? Motion to approve. Thank you. Second, thank you. Any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Student trustee Ramirez.
Aye.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown. Trustee Brown.
You're on mute, Linda. There we go.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa. Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
The vote is seven zero with student trustee aye.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bucklight. Agenda item I ten. This is board bylaw number two zero one five regarding student member. And do we, do I have a motion on agenda item I ten?
Vote to approve.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I I would be interested in our student trustee. Any 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 commentary, David?
Yep, I just want to mention this, something I brought up, actually, because I was having conversations with other student trustees and I'm talking about the student engagement culture at their campuses. And it's funny because I I found that some of them were actually surprised that I was paid less. it's funny, because I, I, I found that some of them were actually surprised that I was paid less than other trustees, so I was just, to me, it's just like a, like an easy fix, uh, just given that there is, but there wasn't really a, a way that the, that this pay was calculated, and so, I don't know, uh, it was just a question that I brought up.
Well, yeah, and and thank you for bringing this up, and and hopefully, um, we, we're, we're conducting our meetings um, in conformity with this board bylaw be- before it's even passed, but I, I support codifying it and and making it official. Um, so this has been moved and seconded and uh, let's uh, any further discussion? Uh, let's go to a roll call vote again, Mr. Bucklehead.
Student trustee Ramirez.
Aye.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
The vote is seven zero with student trustee aye.
Okay, motion carries. On to uh, uh, agenda item I eleven. This is board bylaw number two-six-one-zero, presentation of initial collective bargaining proposals.
Motion to approve.
Mo- moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion before we hold a vote? Uh, hearing none, uh, we'll go to a roll call vote, Mr. Bucklehead.
Student trustee Ramirez.
Aye.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
The vote is seven zero with student trustee voting aye.
Uh, motion carries. Um, we're now moving on to item I twelve, and I believe we have public comment on this item, and do we, do we do the motion first and then the public comment, or do we start with the public?
You start with the public comment.
Okay. Mr. Bucklehead.
All right, I have, I have one public comment on this item. Good evening, Pasadena City College Board of Trustees. I am Mark Whitworth, President of the Pasadena City College Faculty Association. I'm speaking tonight to strongly urge the board to reject the proposed twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two academic calendar being presented by President Ender Janus. The Association is extremely disappointed in the creation and recommendation of a calendar that eliminates the winter intercession. We have been down this road before with a calendar that has not been fully negotiated. It was a time no one wants to revisit. To be clear, the Faculty Association is prepared to protect the faculty rights in this process. The proposed calendar has been soundly rejected by both the PCC faculty and the PCC student body. Through every step of the process, including numerous surveys, the faculty has rejected the proposed calendar, and their input has been completely ignored by the administration. The faculty has been presented absurd rationales for the elimination of the winter intercession, such as student internships and the ease of students obtaining summer jobs, and thoughtfully rejected these rationales. During this process, the Faculty Association was not consulted a single time. This, in and of itself, constitutes a violation of labor law. The Faculty Association would urge the Board of Trustees to reject this calendar and support the wishes and needs of the students and faculty. At minimum, the board should table this calendar and direct the administration to negotiate a calendar that is acceptable to both students and faculty. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bucklehead. Uh, do we have any uh, presentation on this item?
No, just it is there for your uh, vote and approval.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, I have a question.
I see the student trustee, David Ramirez, uh, uh, take it away, sir.
Yeah, um, so I just wanna fully recognize um, that I'm aware of the opposition and and the historical opposition with removing winter. Um, but however, I think, I think it's important to recognize that this time the intentions are different. Um, and I, I'm in favor of removing winter, um, especially in order to collect the data that's important. Because we, this isn't necessarily something that we've tried. However, I, I would like to see that the college pushes on scheduling more late start, um, STEM courses in both um, fall and spring. And because that life happens with students, especially students that are transferring, and a lot of students have relied on winter and having that sort of cushion so, in case they drop courses and they get another second chance to take those courses again, and so I think it's important to recognize those students specifically, um, that rely on winter to transfer, so, yeah, just with that in mind, I think this would be great.
Yeah, thank you, David. We really value your input on uh, overall, but particularly on items uh, involving academics. Um, any other uh, questions or comments on this item before we call for a vote? Uh, was that a hand up? Uh, I see trustee Martin, uh, hand up.
Thank you. Um. So from, as of eight, that I've had a kind of a hectic day here and haven't had a chance to fully get. Um, so it would, it was, uh, it would help me to know what process did happen, and it would also help me to know, is there a time sensitivity to approving this tonight?
Um, I'm gonna have Dr. Junie uh, to talk about that.
So, um, a couple of things. Um, I, I co-chair the calendar committee along, along with Dr. Matt Hennes, the Academic Senate President. Um, this conversation has actually been going on for quite a while. Uh, there were presentations, a number of presentations that happened at Academic Senate and conversations about it. Um, there were surveys that were sent out, uh, there were various pieces of data that were collected and looked at. Um, and and so it's not something that's happened very quickly. Um, and uh, in regard to timeliness, I, yes, if you don't approve this calendar tonight, if you wait um, much longer, uh, the Office of Instruction will have troubles because we need to start scheduling fall of June twenty-twenty-one um, fairly soon, and um, and so if, if this is delayed much past October, that will be, start becoming difficult.
And if I can offer, it went through our established process, the calendar committee, uh, as Dr. Junie said, studied this um, from numerous directions, and then it passed, this calendar passed, and was sent to college council, and it passed there, and it was made, and the recommendation was made to me to recommend to the board. So it has gone through the established process of identifying and approving an academic calendar for Pasadena City College.
I, I, I appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And and um, this may be an obvious question, but um, the established process includes uh, faculty participation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think.
Uh, trustee Chen Lau.
What, what is the um, financial, um, any financial ramifications of not having winter session?
No, absolutely not, because we're going from having fall, winter, spring, and summer to having fall, spring, summer, summer. So it's four, it's four sessions. Becoming four sessions, there, there is absolutely no economic impact.
And 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 if I may, this is a question, not a statement, uh, the, the benefit of doing this is that our college calendar more closely aligns with the, the uh, UCs and the Cal States and um, our spring ends at roughly the same time as, as other colleges in terms of internships and job opportunities. And again, that was a question, so if you could elaborate.
That is, that is correct, that because our calendar, our current calendar ends so late into the middle of June, by the time our students finish their June, um, their spring classes, many of the internship opportunities, especially in the natural sciences, have passed. And actually, the natural sciences faculty have offered examples of students literally choosing to walk away from their spring final exams rather than lose an internship opportunity. The other uh, reason that this is a positive move is that it means it shortens the time between the end of fall and the beginning of spring. Not all of our students take classes in our winter intercession, which means if you're not, if you don't take classes during the winter, you finish your classes here on campus um, somewhere around December sixteenth or seventeenth, and you don't come back until February seventeenth or eighteenth. That's a long time for students to be away from their studies, and a lot of things can get in the way. And all of the research out there talks about how lessening that time between the two semesters helps with getting students to go from one semester to the next. Um, and I wanna also point out that when this, when this calendar was being discussed, there was a lot of concern from faculty who wanted to understand why I was so concerned about work experience, opportunities, and internships, and asked me, they asked me for data, "Well, how do you know? How do you know?" And I said, "Well, that's part of the problem." I believe it is the case. We have since the, since um, we started utilizing the winter intercession, or however long ago it was, we now have the Freeman Center, and the Freeman Center is totally focused on expanding the number of work um, work-based learning and internship opportunities for our students in the summer. Well, so four or five years ago, we didn't have the Freeman Center, and so the idea behind doing this calendar, and I also wanna point out that what I asked for um, was that we would do this calendar for three years, and we would collect data, and we would see if it made a difference. So this is, this is basically a pilot project. Um, I think from all of the research that's out there, what we will find is that it will improve our students' success, and more students will be able to do internships. Um, so there are lots of different reasons. Before I finish, I'm gonna defer over to Dr. Cynthia Lebo, who will tell you the student services imperative for uh, passing the catalog, uh, the uh, calendar right now.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, it would be very helpful if the vote were taken tonight so that we can begin planning in student services. Uh, many of our students are guided by their educational plans, and we would be able to put together a, a plan to help our students establish their ed plans for the new calendar configuration. And uh, if you vote on this tonight, then we'll be able to get to work on that.
Okay, uh, thank you, everybody, for all of your, your perspective on it. So it's been moved and seconded, uh, any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, um, we will call for a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Bucklehead.
Student trustee Ramirez.
Aye.
Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
The vote is seven zero with student trustee voting aye.
Uh, thank you, motion carries. Uh, final action item, this is I thirteen to approve and ratify the agreement between the Pasadena City College Faculty Association and the Pasadena Area Community College District, and this is effective backdated to July first, twenty-nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Um, do we have any uh, presentation on this item?
Uh, I'll ask uh, Vice President Blazinski if he wants to just say a few words about how we got here.
Well, we're very glad to present a fully executed contract that was overwhelmingly ratified by the FAA um, this past week. Um, it's been nine months of a collaborative uh, experience uh, that I think worked out very well for the district. We have one consolidated document instead of the many different documents that we have historically had. And uh, we're just pleased to bring it forward, and to be honest with you, glad we're kinda done. But I think we, we're very proud of this document. I think we're very proud of what everyone did, including uh, the collaboration with faculty.
Thank, uh, thank you, Vice President Blazinski. Um, okay, um, uh, yeah, do I hear a motion for item I thirteen?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, uh.
Trustee Chen Lau has her hand up.
Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry, uh, trustee Chen Lau, uh, please, uh, go ahead.
To um, trustee Silver's point earlier about um, really the, the faculty um, being important to the college, I certainly want to commend the effort of all the members of the Faculty Association, and certainly the leadership of the Faculty Association for, you know, their effort in negotiations and in working with the administration to get this um, contract through. Um, I hope that um, there will be more dialogue continuously, you know, in terms of uh, having a good working relationship with both um, parties, and I hope that this um, contract serves as a model of how, you know, people from both sides can come together and have something positive come out of it. So thank you to the Faculty Association and to the administration.
Thank you, trustee Chen Lau. Any further discussion? Um, seeing none, uh, we'll go to a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Bucklehead, please.
Student trustee does not vote on personal issues. Trustee Chen Lau.
Aye.
Trustee Osterling.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Wa.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Fellow.
Aye.
The vote is seven zero.
Motion carries. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bucklehead. We now move on to um, we now move on to item J, which is information items, and um, specifically, it's our superintendent president's report.
Okay, well, it is uh, great to be here, and uh, the first thing I'm gonna do is give a huge shout out to the very newly minted Dr. Rebecca Cobb, who defended her dissertation today at UCLA. So yay, 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 that is absolutely fa- fabulous. I remember the night I defended my dissertation, it was one of the most glorious days of my life. So I am very excited for her, we're really proud of her, so yay, Dr. Cobb. Woo, it never gets old, just saying, Dr. Cobb. Uh, I also uh, want to say that we had an excellent visit with the panel from the Aspen Institute. They were here um, April sixth, or April, October sixth through the eighth. Um, I wanna thank our trustees and all the other people across campus, who were many, who took part in talking with the panel. Great conversations, and they seem to see that we've made great progress since twenty-eighteen. And um, the, the Aspen Institute was doing all of their visits this fall. They will meet in January and February, and then the uh, ceremony is supposed to be in early May, and hopefully, the third time is the charm. A couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of chairing a virtual ACCJC visit to Questa College, and uh, Ms. Crystal Colross was my intrepid team chair, or a team assistant. And it was a great experience, because we are about to get visited, also a virtual visit in March, uh, March eighth through the eleventh, so the fact that Crystal and I had the opportunity to experience the visit from the chair side, um, and now we're, that helps us prepare for um, for the next part of it in March, which is the actual visit itself. It was a very different feel to it, because we weren't slogging through things, uh, you know, all throughout the day. We had lots of Zoom meetings, but there was a lot of attention paid to trying to keep the Zoom fatigue down during the visit. And um, so that was a great experience, and um, in November, we are working on getting a, you will be presented with our Iser for full review in time to vote in December, but we're also working on getting a training for the Board of Trustees before our November. But we're also working on getting a training for the Board of Trustees before our November tenth meeting. So that when you're looking through the Iser, which I know you will rush out and do the second you get it, you will know exactly what you should be looking for. We had a slate of late start classes that began this last Monday. More than two hundred and fifty sections were in that. And it was a great chance for students. And I think our trustee Ramirez already pointed out how important those late start sessions can be. Students who, for whatever reason, didn't get to start the regular semester or had to drop a class. This is a great opportunity to pick another class up to catch up. Tomorrow, LA County workers will deliver our vote center supplies to the Crowe Ling Lounge to open our early voting on Saturday. We will have, Voting at PCC is one of two eleven-day vote centers in the city of Pasadena. The other one is at the Rose Bowl. I think we're probably a little easier to get to. Hours are ten AM to seven PM from Saturday, October twenty-fourth through November second and seven AM to eight PM on Tuesday, November third. Of course, we have to end at eight. It is the day. Any registered voter in LA County can cast a ballot at any vote center. And there's also same-day registration too. So get out there and vote. I've already voted here in Ventura County. I've tracked my ballot. Let's get out there and vote, folks. This week is, is Undocumented Student Action Week and the California Community Colleges and our Quest Center is running a series of virtual events to help undocumented students find resources and community this week. In a similar vein, we learned this week that PCC is one of the nation's top fifteen colleges and universities for Hispanic students, as ranked by the Hispanic Outlook on Education Magazine. And Alex has already sent out a press release on this. So it's very exciting. Over the last few days, the Cross Cultural Center has hosted its annual mixers. There's the Black Latinx, Asian Pacific Islander, and LGBTQ. Communities have all had mixers and it's virtual. We all miss the food. We all miss the fun of dancing around and listening to great music. But it's been great doing activities, doing small group, doing small group activities. And, and I really appreciate the work of the Cross Cultural Center. Yesterday, the Foundation for California Community Colleges announced a one hundred million dollar donation from the Jay Pritzker Foundation. It's a five-year commitment. And it is designed to help students at thirty-four colleges in more remote areas of the state. And the grants and aids, aid is designed to help with completion. Interesting, it's not really about Southern California, but it's a pretty amazing donation, a hundred million dollars. That's a significant investment in our system. Next Friday, October thirtieth, we are going to be hosting a virtual visit of some members of the Board of Governors. And the Board of Governors has requested a chance to hear what's happening at PCC. And we are working on our presentation for them. We have a nice little sizzle reel for them to see about our college. And we learned today that we get to welcome all the trustees to attend and listen to the discussion and we will send those details along. They've been very strict about how they wanted the visit to go. And it was only now that we learned that we do get to say, hey, trustees, come on and hang out with the Board of Governors. It's not the entire Board of Governors. It's a small group, but please, everyone, including you, David, please. I think you're, you might have already known about that. And then also November twelfth will be the Future of Work Conference. That's hosted by our PCC Economic and Workforce Development Group. The theme is advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion in workforce development. And we will send out the link for more information. We had a very successful conference last November on the future of work. So hopefully, I, you know, virtual format, but hopefully we'll have as many people there. And I really encourage all of you to come and just have a, have a great time. So thank you.
Dr. Ender Janis, that's a very comprehensive report, but I don't think it's quite complete. I was listening on KPCC the other day and happened to hear you on, on a program there. Can you tell us about that, please?
Yeah, I'd rather not, but I'm gonna anyway, since you brought it up. We were invited to be, I was invited to be along with my colleague Greg Schultz from Fullerton College, as well as Catherine Jeffrey from Santa Monica College. We were invited to be interviewed on Larry Mantle's program about the challenges of leaving our institutions in the time of COVID. And first of all, our segment was supposed to be thirty minutes long, but the former segment went over by about ten minutes. They were talking to folks from the Federalist Society. So you can imagine how pertinent that was. So there was only twenty minutes left and we all had a chance to speak. But then Mr. Mantle thought it was really important to invite students to call in. And two did, one from Santa Monica College, who is recently unemployed and worried about qualifying for unemployment benefits even, and applying for financial aid. So that got clarified. But in the waning thirty seconds with the music playing, a PCC student was on air and complained quite a bit about his experience at PCC. And I did a lot to say, please reach out to us. Let's see what we can do. We reached out to him. He did reach out back and we have resolved his issues. But it was unfortunate that with the music playing and us fading out, I was trying to help a student who was frustrated. So thanks for bringing that up, though, trustee Osterling. I so appreciate that.
Thank you for representing PCC on, on the air. Okay, and thanks for your report. We're going to move on to Agenda Item K announcements. And we'll start off with our shared governance representatives. And we're going to start as usual with the Student Association President, Mackenzie Rivera. You are up.
Hi, everybody. First off, I am very happy to announce that Associate Students now has a complete executive board. We recently appointed Michael Garcia as our VP of Business Affairs. And we appointed Felicia Chong as our VP of Publicity. So I am very happy to have a full board and I look forward to all of them getting to meet you as well. We also had our first social distance event last Friday. For anyone who doesn't know what the event was, we set, we set up on the Roseme campus along, along with the Colorado campus to create these movie giveaway kits so that students can come up and get, get, pick up these kits and they could take them home for a virtual movie night, which was actually run by our Vice President of Diversity, Jasmine Lopez. So it was really nice to see everybody come out. We didn't reach as many students as we would have liked. But considering that we were among the first to do this sort of event, I was really happy to see how it turned out. I'm proud of how my board ran this event and I look forward to doing more events like this. AS is actually hosting an event this week along with the Student Health Services in, in collaboration for Domestic Violence Month, Awareness Month. They'll be hosting a town hall, hall of talking about domestic violence and how to live with peace over violence. It'll be from twelve to one PM and you can actually find the link to the YouTube on our Instagram, MyASPCC. Other than that, that concludes my report for today.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Dr. Ender Janis, now that we have a full board, will we have a chance to, for the, the Board of Trustees to meet the board?
To meet the student board? Absolutely. We could, we could do that anytime you want. We could agendize that for next month, certainly.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll suggest that now. I know we've got future agenda items coming up, but I'll put that on the table right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. And thank you, Mackenzie. Next, we have Classified Senate and that would be Ernesto Portita.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, trustee Osterling. Good evening, trustees. October has been a busy month for the Classified Senate. As part of our shared governance process, you know, we've been looking at APs and BPs and also providing additional feedback as needed as part of the process. And we've also been continuing working with the accreditation process. Next week, yes, next week, we have our Fall General Meeting scheduled on October thirtieth for, from eleven to twelve thirty. Our goal is to really just provide our classified colleagues general updates about the Classified Senate and what's been going on. And also provide some sort of collegiality in this virtual sense that normally we would have had it in Creveling. So we're going to try to adapt it as virtual as possible. Our colleagues are also, our classified colleagues across campus are taking part of a series from the AMN organization with the support of the Office of the President and Professional Development. These sessions have served as an opportunity to dive deeper about how we can equip ourselves with the tools and frameworks needed to address anti-racism practices and different, in different capacities that are classified body are, are representing. And lastly, I want to publicly recognize all our classified colleagues across campus. In each of their individual roles, the Classified Senate continues to hear the new and creative ways that they, our classified colleagues are adapting to support our students and support the work of the college. From our facility colleagues who have been working on campus every day, despite our campus actually being close to the public, to our colleagues, to our colleagues virtually welcoming students in the Virtual Support Center through the Pathways FYE Program, to three individuals, Natalie Pacheco, Dan Huen, and Khalil Ford. And they'll work with the Title V of Benintaminos Grant and the Dayton Symposium that they put on last week with the support of Student Equity. And that is all for me.
Thank you, Ernesto. Next, we move to Management, Association, and Tito Altamirano.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Hello. So I, like our respected shared governance colleagues, the MA has been working hard to support its members and intern the college. While we may not be with each other in person, the past month, like others, has been filled with activities. For my reports, and I will highlight a few of the undertakings of particular notes. I'd like to thank Dean and after his successful dissertation defense earlier today, as mentioned by Dr. Ender Janis, Dr. Rebecca Cobb, for her working with her staff with a special recognition to Matthew Morgan-Pegas of the Cross Cultural Center on organizing fun and affirming student, staff, and faculty mixers throughout the month of October. We have one, we have one remaining tomorrow, our Native American and Indigenous Peoples Faculty, Staff, and Student Virtual Mixer. Again, many managers join faculty and staff at these empowering events and want to thank them. Similarly, I'd like to thank and recognize Dr. Michaela Marastamayo for leading the Abriendo Caminos to Excellence PC Latina, Latino, Latinx Data Symposium over a two-day, which really was a two-week period, that highlighted our student voices and how the college has impacted them and where we still have work to do. This learning opportunity provided a space for the faculty, staff, and managers in attendance to further consider how embracing our identity as a Hispanic-serving institution provides space to better serve all our students, especially those who have been historically marginalized in higher, on higher education. Thirdly, as mentioned in her public comment, I want to recognize the work that Carol Calandra and her staff have done in support of our veterans and beyond. The work they've done is truly amazing and has brought in stakeholders throughout the college. The VRC furthermore has been a generous source of support to other programs that developing at PCC. And for that, we are further grateful to the leadership that Carol brings. Finally, I want to acknowledge the managers, participators throughout the Latina, Latino, Latinx Heritage Month activities and supported the development and now the sharing of the Latina, Latino, Latinx Resource Guide that was coordinated by Counseling Faculty Member Desiree Zuniga. Though we were not physically present, many managers came together and increasingly engaged with rich programming that had the dual purposes of celebrating and educating. Lastly, our managers are looking forward to another productive month ahead in our hired roles, as well as the committees you proudly serve on them. We also will wish, I mean, we also wish Will Sims continued success in his new role as interim dean of non-credit. And thank you to all of our managers for your ongoing commitment to change our practices and procedures in order to best serve our college. Thank you.
Thank you, Tito. And next, we have Faculty Senate, Dr. Matt Pennas.
Hi, good evening. I have a few things to report. I suppose one of them is, in a recent action by the Academic Senate, they unanimously voted to suspend the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance because it was pointed out that liberty and justice are not experienced by all in this country. We also, after several rounds, approved goals for the year, including how to, how we can increase the proportion of African-American students on our campus, how we can incorporate equity and social justice into our outcomes, our learning outcomes, and developing an anti-racist policy through, like, as a lens through which we'll conduct our business. We're also looking at options for flexible grading policy in the fall term, the current term. It turns out we may be limited in what we can do, but we're looking at what's best for all involved. As a body, we have endorsed the Accreditation Iser, the self-study. And one of the quality-focused essays, there is one to go. And as a body, we are looking at how the Academic Senate can help actualize the Student Equity Plan. I've been working with the Office of Instruction on a process to recruit faculty to inclusion lens. This is in the early stages and it's part of a larger initiative in response to the Chancellor's call to action. And the initiative will include professional development and curriculum and pedagogy. The overall goal is for students to experience equity-focused classroom instruction. A new shared governance committee has been formed. We'll meet this month with the aim of developing social justice SLOs at the course, program, and institution level. So that should fit nicely with the Senate's goals. And to develop institutional learning outcomes generally. We don't currently have institution learning outcomes. We have general education outcomes, but we're looking at a small change there. The Faculty Hiring Priorities Committee is working on a timeline, the timeline that we have in our administrative procedure, that we're hoping will result in our being able to fly positions sooner in the year than we currently do. And our hope there is that we'll get even better candidates than we usually do because they won't have been scooped up by other colleges. Other actions done by the Academic Senate, we appointed seven faculty to Senate subcommittees, three faculty to campus-wide committees, five to hiring committees, and we approved one board policy. I know that there are more APs and BPs coming down the road. You'll get them in your packets in coming months. I attended the regional meeting for the Academic Senate of California Community Colleges last week in advance of Fall Plenary, which will be held early in November and it will be held virtually. As you know, the, there was an A2 Men webinar in, in September and nearly sixty faculty members were able to attend there. We are currently, I've just submitted a long list of names for folks to attend this Saturday's webinar. And faculty have also been informed that their current courses are the ones that are going to be reviewed by the Accreditation Visiting Team next term. They have received a set of, a detailed set of expectations. So I'm hopeful that we're going to have a good showing there. That concludes my report.
Matt, thank you for your report and I always look forward to your report to see what your virtual background is and you didn't disappoint this month as well.
Good to hear.
Okay, we're going to move on to the, the trustee reports. And as usual, we're going to start with our student trustee, Mr. David Ramirez. Take it away, sir.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I know that some of you have been in meetings for almost five hours now, so I'll try to keep this short. I just wanted to point a few things. So firstly, Associated Students did choose to adopt a resolution to endorse Proposition sixteen this afternoon. We stand by this measure. We stand in denouncing an education system that favors privilege much higher than any other factor in admissions. And we're firm on that belief that we won't see a systemic change until Prop two oh nine is repealed. Secondly, I just wanted to mention that Dr. Cobb is clearly very loved. I was also planning on, on announcing this. Congratulations to her defending her dissertation, Dr. Cobb. We're all very, very proud of you. And thirdly, we're also starting to plan many of our signature events now. So hopefully, we're trying to get pretty creative with doing them in a manner that is safe. So hopefully, we'll be able to serve more students through our drive-through giveaways in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, David. And we're now going to go to our, the, the rest of our trustees. And we're going to do this on my screen from upper left to lower right. So you may not know when you're going to be called. And first one up is Dr. Tony Fellow.
I have nothing, sir. I'm just trying to get this meeting over. I have three hours of homework for my PCC class tomorrow. Year olds, you know that.
Yeah, Tony, thank you for your brevity. It was a wish by memory. What course are you taking, sir?
Taking an Italian class.
That's right.
Very hard. And I have fifty. Very hard. And I have fifteen-year-olds from high school. Right student.
I thought you could teach that.
I am very, I am very um competitive with them, so, but they, we have a, we have a great time. I enjoyed them immensely. Thank you.
I, I thought you could teach that course. You better get an A.
I'm refreshing, wow, I'm getting an A, but. It's been fun.
Uh, thank you, Tony. And thank you again for your brevity. Uh, Trustee Berlinda Brown, you are next.
Oh, well, I do not have much to report other than I have been in Zoom meetings just about two, three times a week. I did attend the ACCT um conference, which I found was very, very good. I had quite a few sessions that were very informative. And I do have one thing I will be requesting to put on our agenda later on. But um, I'm, it's been pretty productive, so that's about it.
Thank you. And thank you for your involvement at the state and the, the national level, uh, Berlinda.
Oh, anytime.
Next, next up is trustee uh Linda Wa, our future uh ACCT uh, uh, board member representative.
Well, thanks for your confidence, Jim. I think we still have to vote. Um, okay, so as you know, Thursdays, we do trustee webinars, although we will be taking a hiatus, I guess, in November and December, although, and we, we are actually having a hard time taking that hiatus because topics keep popping up. But um, our last trustee webinar, um, Vice Chancellor Ayesha Lowe talked about ethnic studies and the impact um, to community colleges from the CSU legislation, so I hope you have a chance to listen to that. I um, I shared uh your concerns, Dr. Andrew Johnis, about the impact on the ADTs and transfers. And the Chancellor's Office certainly did acknowledge that and uh they will be working with both the CSU as well as the UC system on this. Um, the, tomorrow, uh, we're not actually doing a trustee webinar. It's actually going to be an ETP training. And one of the things that the League has done is they now have a second credential, which is on diversity equity training. So um, anyone who attends that will be earning a credent- uh, a, I guess, a score mark towards their uh, their effective trustee uh credential under DEI. Um, and I'm really pleased to hear the BOG is coming here. I know they, they called and said, oh, do you, do you think Pasadena would want to do it? I said, oh, I think Erica would be thrilled. So thank you so much for doing that. I think this is really, this will be great for our college uh to interact with the BOG.
You're welcome. And, and trustee Wa, just so you know, next Thursday, I'm actually on the trustee webinar. I'm
Yes, you are. You're doing the three C, two A. So I hope everyone will, will come in and listen. Um, it's something that we've been, we've had on our agenda for a while. We're finally going to be able to get to that. Um, the uh, so I, the BOG will be meeting in November, and I just wanted to call out a couple of things for those of you who want to listen to the Board of Governors. Um, they will be adopting uh an EEO template. Um, I, I believe that will be uh presented uh by the E, EEO DAC uh Committee. Um, but I also want to call out that they're, they will be voting on their reorganization. Um, so Vice President Pam Haynes um is expected to ascend to the president. And she has nominated uh BOG member Hildy Agüinaldo. Um, if that actually happens, then uh we will have for the first time two women of color leading the Board of Governors. Um, so many of us are going to come in and express our support uh for that to happen. So if anyone is interested in attending, I hope you do. And then the League will be having their conference uh in November, so the third week, um, 19th to 21st. There'll be a number of caucus meetings, including the newly-formed Women's Caucus for which, which Dr. Andrew Johnis is one of the steering committee members. Um, so I hope that you all will um join us for all of the, the conferences and for many of the caucus meetings. That's it.
Uh, thank you, trustee Wa, and thank you as always for all that you do for PCC and state and, and nationwide. Appreciate your service. Uh, next up on my screen is trustee Tammy Silver.
Hi, I want to uh reiterate Berlinda's uh appreciation to PCC for allowing us to attend the Association of Community College Trustees. Uh, I know Linda, Berlinda, me, Jim, were you there? Yeah, Jim. So we had a wonderful representation from PCC. Erica, you spoke on a panel, I believe, too. Yes, right, yes. So uh, I learned a lot and I uh, I really appreciate all the opportunities that PCC gives to all of us as trustees to learn. Uh, I always get something out of these conferences and I took notes. I, I really appreciate it and I'm looking forward to the CALES. This being national was very interesting to hear uh from people all across the country. And the one coming up in a couple of weeks will be our own California Association, and I'm really looking forward to that, too.
Yeah, and Tammy, uh, thank you for that report and thank you for your participation at the state and national level as our newest trustee. I've seen you uh go up the new trustee learning curve very, very quickly. And, and uh, I know that you've been able to do that by attending all of these events, albeit via, via Zoom. So thank you for that. Um, next up, we have trustee John Martin.
No report.
Okay, thank you for that brief, the brevity, John. And, and next up, we have trustee Sandra Chenlao.
Hi, I um, attended the A2M seminar on Reform or Dismantle Beyond Diagnosing Racism. And it was a real, it was really inspiring to hear Dr. Cornell West um talk about um, you know, he, he doesn't really talk, right? He preaches in, in such a, a beautiful way. And um, with um, Dr. Michael Dyson and also Dr. Joy Degru. And one of the examples that they gave mirrored what was happening at PCC, which was, they say that a lot of time, systems would go and hire a chief developer, a, a chief diversity officer and cross that off their list as a checkbox for their DEI um effort. And what the system has to do is to assess itself and to see whether it can be supportive of this, you know, diversity officer to be successful at the institution. So I know that that is something that um PCC and especially with President Andrew Johnis is committed to. And I'm really looking forward to, you know, us um doing DEI and making it into action, which I believe that we are doing, you know, right now um as the administration and also as the board. So other than that, um, I again want to thank um the PCC staff and faculty for conducting their business with such professionalism. I mean, we know that these are not normal times. So thank you for your work and um whether it's through Zoom and, you know, whether if you're coming onto campus and just to offer my appreciation for what you do on a daily basis. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Sandra. And um, I'll be briefed in, in, in my reporting. I was um listening um to KPCC recently and wanted to give a shout out to uh PCC's own Dr. Chris West, who is uh appearing in a new PBS uh documentary called Driving While Black. And not only is he in the uh, in the, in the documentary, but he was also featured in the, the article about the documentary. And um, I've had the, the pleasure of hearing Dr. uh West uh speak on this subject shortly after the, the famous movie The Green Book came out. Um, I saw him give a lecture on The Green Book and, and brought it home right here to Pasadena. And the challenges um in that era of The Green Book of, of uh black African-Americans being able to travel around the country in cars and enjoy the freedom that the rest of us uh own. I haven't seen the documentary yet. I believe it's now out and I would encourage everybody uh to, to watch the documentary um, as, as well as see our very own Dr. Chris West uh um as part of that documentary. And lastly, um, I note the uh casting of uh one of the most famous PCC alums, and that is Rock and Roll Hall of Fame member Eddie Van Halen of the Van, Van Halen Rock and Roll Group. Um, and uh famously, all four members of the original Van Halen group all attended PCC. I believe they met at PCC, not sure about that, but I know that they performed uh a number of times uh right in the Sex and Auditorium. And um, uh, Alex Buckelheid has already been in contact with the city of Pasadena in coming up with an appropriate uh memorial to, to recognize this famous uh Pasadena uh citizen. Uh, coincidentally, member of PC, uh, grew up in PCC trustee seat number two, uh, yours truly. And um, we will be um adjourning the meeting in, in memory of, of um our, our famous uh PCC alum. And uh, that concludes my report. And so we're going to move on to item K2, which is future, uh, excuse me, proposed future board business meeting dates. Um, and uh, we would only uh have any discussion here if there's a need to change any of the uh, the dates that we have already counted.
I do just want to point out, trustee Osterling, that on the November meeting, November 10th is a Tuesday, and we are meeting on Tuesday because November 11th is uh Veterans Day and our college is closed in honor of that. And we will be starting, uh, we will be having a one-hour study session from 4:30 to 5:30. And that'll be a training session uh with a person from the ACCJC. And the goal is, as I mentioned earlier in the evening, to do a training on our Iser. And as you all are going to go off and read our Iser in, in advance of our December board meeting. So I just wanted to make a note of that.
Okay, and, and so just to summarize, uh, the board meeting will start at what time?
This, the board meeting will still start at six uh, the normal time, but we will do a study session. I think we, we all might deserve a tiny break in between.
Okay, and, and so you'll send out uh three uh calendar items for that, open, closed, and study session?
Yes, we will.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Um, any other uh issues with our upcoming uh, uh board uh dates? Uh, hearing none, uh, we'll move on to K3, which is Proposed Future Agenda Items. And I think there was at least one, uh, somebody said they were going to uh request to propose an agenda item. Uh, Tammy, trustee Silver, please.
Yeah, I would like to have progress in DEI on the agenda. That being said, we don't have any metrics or we don't know what we're asking for. So right now, it would just be maybe anecdotal about how our DEI uh, our, our new person in terms of DEIs is doing. But I would like it just to sit on the agenda to remind us and then when we have actual uh data to talk about, we can then dive deep.
Yep. Well, Tammy, uh, uh, thank you for mentioning that. And, and we do want to include uh DEI um, on our ongoing agendas because it's important and we need to pay attention. And um, I hope that we will uh more fully flesh out this agenda item from the, the, the first one that we did today. Um, it can include reports from um, uh, the DEI work groups as, as we did now, but also uh what efforts we are implementing on campus. And, and yes, having a new uh chief DEI officer, um, it would be um, uh, appropriate to, to have that as an ongoing agenda item. And um, any other uh, uh, proposed future agenda items? Uh, trustee
Trustee Brown's candidate.
Yeah, thank you.
Both ways, thank you. So what I would like to request is that in the near future, we have a presentation on non-credit division of the college.
That's coming up in November.
You better, you're right, bye-bye.
It's right here, November. The uh, Dr. Will Sims will be presenting on non-credit and PCC Northwest.
Okay, but let me just be clear, what is it I'm looking for? So what I'm looking for is to see, maybe it is there. How are we preparing to help our students that, that are needing job, how are we training them? Students or people, community members that need to obtain a skill? How are we engaging with the industries and with um, with employers to provide folks that needs some skills for a job quickly? Is that, would that be what we're talking about?
Well, I think what you're talking about is probably going to get covered between November and December because November, we're going to talk about non-credit and PCC Northwest. And in December, we're going to talk about the Freeman Center. And in that, we will be talking about some of what you're mentioning. So yes, we will make sure that gets covered.
I will be looking forward to it, man.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, trustee Brown. Any other uh proposed future agenda items? Okay, we now get to move on to everybody's uh favorite part of the meeting, and, and that is adjournment. And um, we will once again adjourn um in memory of all of the victims locally, uh, nationally and worldwide, the victims of, of COVID-19. And, and we, we hope that that scourge will, will end soon. Um, we, we also will adjourn uh in memory of the victims of um, uh, police violence. And lastly, uh, we will adjourn in memory of PCC alum and Rock and Roll Hall of Fame member Eddie Van Halen. Uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Hi, thank you.